I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. People here that we haven't seen for forever. Next thing on the agenda is approve of minutes from the last meeting. I make a motion we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Kent, a second by Chris, to approve the minutes of September twenty-second. All those in favor? Thank you. Next are department reports. And seeing that the man is here.
The man is a legend. Is it okay if I present from in the front row here, or do I have to stand on the X?
Stand on the X.
Eventually, there's gonna be a lecture in there, but for now.
You're good.
Just marks the spot.
Just just keep in mind that people can't see you.
That's okay. That's really a good thing. So for the fire department, I didn't get to see you guys the last meeting, so I'm just gonna talk a little bit about September eleventh. I believe Linda had mentioned a couple things on my last meeting, so thank you for doing that. But we had a great turnout at that event with about seventy people. A few of you that came, thank you. We're planning to do that again on an annual basis going forward. Surprisingly, it took twenty years for us to have a remembrance, but certainly on the twentieth anniversary, we felt it was important to do so. And next year, we hope to have our memorial constructed, and that will be a real big, a much bigger event than what this past year was. It was a real big hit having the core Highlanders Pipes and Drums there play, play a few tunes. I think a lot of people really enjoyed that. So this week is Fire Prevention Week. As I've said in the past, October ninth is the Great Chicago Fire. And we spent the last two days, yesterday and today, giving fire safety messages to the littles of the Monmouth, and we even reached out to Wonder a While Nursery School today. They actually reached out to us to come visit our station. So we opened our doors and entertained twenty-two preschoolers today and had a great time with them. Yesterday, we went up to the Monmouth Memorial School, and we taught fire safety lessons to ten classes, total in about a hundred and ninety minutes. So that that was a lot of work, because we did it shorter thirty-minute classes, but we took in more kids this year. We included third graders. We hadn't done third graders in the past, but because they missed last year due to COVID, we felt we could include them this year. So we did pre-K through third grade, like I said, a hundred and ninety kids, and we rotated them every thirty minutes, new class coming outside. We met outside right at the bus loop, and it was just nice visibility to have the fire parked out at the front of the school and having the kids come out to us. It was beautiful weather, and the teachers, staff, kids really enjoyed what they called getting a mask break from school and coming outside and sitting apart and being able to take the mask off breathe the fresh air and learn a whole thing about fire safety. So that all went really, really good. Unfortunately, due to COVID concerns, we are not doing a Sparky Breakfast this Saturday. Historically, we've done that on the Saturday following Fire Prevention Week, but auxiliary still will cautious about bringing people indoors to feed them. And so for that reason, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off a little bit longer. I think they plan to do another takeout dinner sometime in November, like we did last time with the ham takeout dinner. You place your orders online or call, call ahead. The next meeting, or when we get into November, I'll do another announcement on that, but I believe it's November thirteenth when they're gonna do a ham dinner. Last Sunday, we had the fall harvest sale at Highmore Farm. We got rained on, but despite the rain, we still had a very successful turnout, and we raised about fifteen hundred dollars for our Richard P. Milligan Scholarship. So that was pretty good. And the host test in from September twenty-fifth that we were supposed to do during the Apple Fest five K race, we ended up postponing that. They were predicting rain that day, and so we canceled it, and it didn't even rain. We were doing enough other things that it worked out just as well. So next Saturday, not this coming Saturday, but Saturday the sixteenth will be up at Bates Manufacturing to do our host test. And then the last thing I got is that cancer study. We're gonna be participating in that next week on the fourteenth, and that will be twenty-two firefighters signed up. They've done the pre-survey already online. And next Thursday, they'll be coming, the people from Rutgers University of Health to take blood and some other samples and make us part of their study. So anxious to see how that that turns out. It's all confidential, and we may not even get direct results unless it's something that's really suspect that we need to report to our own physicians, but we'll get a general study of our membership participation. Certainly share that with you guys when we get it. That's all I have. Unless anybody has any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have one question on the record study. When, when are you expecting to have? Do you have a sense of the timing of when?
I don't. And I know they they have another visit, like it's either six months or a year later where they're gonna come back and do some other type of survey.
Okay. There's a few other departments in Maine.
Yeah, yeah, there's five or six departments in Maine. I know Chelsea Fire Department's doing it, I believe. Cumberland Fire Department's doing it. Hollowell, us, and there was a couple more.
They picked Monmouth?
They picked Monmouth because of Hollowell. So one of the staff people that's doing the study lives in Hollowell. Talked to their fire chief, and he says, I know a department that you'd wanna reach out to, and and they'd probably have a good participation rate, because you figure a lot of departments, they're lucky to have twenty people on their roster. I think they're lucky to get maybe fifty percent participation. So where we've got almost fifty members, and we got about twenty-two signed up currently. You know, that that helps with their numbers. Obviously, the more the merrier.
Yeah, that's true.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Mulholland?
Hi, good evening. I don't know if I mentioned it prior, but I'm gonna mention it now. A couple, three weeks ago, Officer Mora, she attended Taser Instructor Class up at Orno, and so now she is a certified taser instructor. She's already we would do for research on a couple of guys, so she's already done them, and she's also done a couple from Winthrop. So that worked out well for us. Speaking of the Apple Fest and the run, I'd like to thank Dan and his crew for helping me out with some of the intersections during the run. Went quite well, I thought. Lasted just about an hour, which is what usual part of the course. Apple Fest, I thought, went quite well. A little late in the morning, but the afternoon picked up, so it was a good day. I think we finished, I had the road back open right around three o'clock, so that went out well. And the last thing I have is and three officers, well, three officers attended the funeral for the Hancock Deputy last Thursday. And also Officer Sherman, he was in the Pipe and Drum Band that was up there as well. So altogether, we had four officers up there for the funeral. And that is all I have. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Before I get started, I just wanna say, for everyone who's gonna be speaking later on this evening, our microphones are right above our tables, and I know it seems like an intimate setting, but remember that you need to project enough to get out to the people who are zooming in. I did just do a quick check with Chief Mulholland, and he did say that he could hear okay, but just wanted to let everyone know where the speakers are. For my report, I just wanna remind everyone that taxes are due on Thursday, the fourteenth. I think everyone's kind of got the fifteenth set in their head, because it tends to be that date many, many years in a row. But this year is the fourteenth, because that's the last business day of the week for us. We've been getting a lot of taxes in the mail, a lot of people coming in to pay. That's a good thing. Absentee ballots for the November second election are available at the office, and you can go online to the state's website and request an absentee ballot. And you can also track your absentee ballot on there once you've requested it to see if we've received it, if we've issued it, and if you mail it back, if we have gotten it back. So that's a nice service that the state offers. And last thing I have is the last day to register to vote by mail is the twelfth, which is coming up soon. And other than that, you'd have to come into the clerk's office and the registrar's office to register in person.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Select Board Report.
I've got a couple issues. Observations, we asked for some information following the Friends of Cabessy Watershed's report to us on invasive milk flow in Cabessy. As a follow-up, Tamara Whitmore sent us all an email specifically about Cocknowagon Lake, and the question was, how often do we see people going from Cabessy to Cocknowagon? And it turns out that the second most frequent lake that boats that are in Cocknowagon is Cabessy. So obviously, the the most frequent lake is Cocknowagon. So people put their boat in Cocknowagon, they come back to Cocknowagon. The the reason I was asking the question was just as a gauge of what is the likelihood that we would have a problem in some other lake like Cocknowagon when we know we have a problem in Cabessy? And the answer is, it's likely. So thanks to Tamara Whitmore for providing that information to us. It seems like the pattern of boating in this area is that we don't, at least in Cocknowagon and Invesco, we don't get a whole lot of you know, out of state traffic. It's mostly local traffic when it's not traffic from the lake itself. The other lake-related issue came up actually yesterday. I was notified by the the folks who are designing and constructing the boat launch, the new boat launch on Invesco Lake. And it was notified that they have just filed their final permit, building permit with the town of Winthrop. They have to go through a planning board process there. Their application is in. I'm sure there's gonna be a public hearing for those who are interested. And their permits with DDP, and I think they have to go to the Army Corps of Engineers as well. Those are pending. This is the final permit process that they have to have to obtain before they can begin construction or actually put stuff out to bid to begin construction.
So that means that they won't be constructing this year, but possibly next spring?
I'd say go maybe spring, have the permits in hand, actually put stuff out to bid, you know, in the early, early spring so that contractors, you know, they've got a good pool of contractors who would consider the project and and break ground in spring.
Remind me where the is the boat landing moving location? Where is it moving to? Obviously, Winthrop.
Yeah, so temporarily, it's located at the Augusta West Campground.
Yes.
God, God bless Kale and Brittany Molston for allowing public access from A to E. The 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 new boat launch, the parcel, is adjacent to Camp Michiwana.
Okay.
On the Makeover Road. Actually, I think on that side is the Holmes Road, right? On that side of the town line. And if you go to the Lake Association Facebook page, Invesco Lake Association Facebook, you could see their preliminary design, what it looks like, and
Yeah, so so it's available. Oh, yeah, the plot plans are good.
Well, that's spot on. In Monmouth on the wagon was always a scary place for people. Not only was that bridge scary, because of all the bad things that have happened on it, but just getting boats launched and people backing in, I mean. So.
Yeah, it's a disaster waiting.
Yeah, exactly. It is still scary, because people don't stop and, you know, just just the way it is.
One-lane bridge.
Yeah, I was fine launching it about a decade, but yeah, but the bridge is scary.
Yeah, well, it's.
Hopefully, the bridge can get widened someday, replaced.
Well, the traffic there is the scary part, because I always think of Larry Pawelski.
Where do you say to get the? It's scary all by itself.
The plans are available. I mean, it's a public document, so you could ask IFW for them, but I know that there is a post on the Invesco Lake Improvement Association Facebook page that shows exactly what the footprint looks like and and what what, you know, the preliminary design is.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's all.
That's it.
Anybody else? Next is public comment. Anybody?
I failed to mention about Halloween. So Fire Department will be opened up for Halloween, Sunday, four o'clock to eight o'clock. And our auxiliary will be selling burgers and hot dogs, because hopefully people grab them and go outdoors and eat them to bring your appetite. But I also heard on the news this morning that get your Halloween candy early, because there's probably gonna be a shortage.
Really?
Yes. Yeah, candy and costumes, so. Anybody that lives on Main Street. We got six hundred kids last year, so get your candy early, because you may not be able to get it in another couple weeks.
Okay. You said to get those little pumpkins, right?
I said you should try the little pumpkins.
Okay.
For those of us that live down long driveways, we have nothing to worry about.
Nothing to worry about. Okay. No other public comment. Okay. Next is setting the polling place time, opening time.
This is housekeeping that we have to do before every election. State law requires all the polls to close at eight P M., but there is some flexibility in what time you open them. Monmouth Polling Places Place, place singular, has traditionally opened at eight A M., and I'm asking that you set the opening time for eight A M. At the Academy.
I make a motion, and we set the opening time for eight A M. The Academy.
I'll second.
So the motion by Kent, second by Chris to set the opening time for the polls at eight A M. On November.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is an abatement of taxes and supplemental tax bill for MAP twenty-eight lot sixty-five dash one.
You have a memo in your packet from Donna Hayes, your assessments agent, explaining that when this property transferred, one piece of property did not get transferred over by mistake, and so now she is asking that you abate the taxes and then issue a supplemental tax bill. The amount is one thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents.
I make a motion to abate the taxes and issue a supplemental tax bill for MAP twenty-eight lot sixty-five dash one.
For the record, who is the property owner?
Donald and June Ellis.
I just want the public. There's a motion by Chris, a second by Harold to abate the taxes for MAP twenty-eight lot sixty-five dash one. And supplement, the supplemental.
Your supplemental bill.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is a request for a facade grant from Monmouth Museum.
You have had this item before you in the past. Reagan La Rochelle, our economic development consultant, is here. If you have any questions about this application. She's here with us this evening.
Any questions?
So the public knows the amount being requested is two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, and it'll cover half the materials and the labor for painting around Blossom House, at four seventy-nine Main Street and Museum sign. So a little bit of spiffing up down there.
That's half the materials and half of the labor? So fifty percent.
The total cost, they get half of that. Total cost being fifty-five hundred.
I make a motion, we approve the facade grant for the Monmouth Museum.
I'll second.
Okay, I made a motion, and Chris seconded it to approve the facade grant for Monmouth Museum. All those in favor? Next is to authorize the town manager to sign an agreement for architectural and engineering services for the renovation and demolition of the former Monmouth Academy with Paul Designs Project, P L L C, and Turk Architecture.
Thank you. This item is before you. After the building committee held several meetings, we put out an RFP for architectural and engineering services for the renovation of the academy, the old academy, and the demolition of the remaining portions as approved by the voters in June. We, the building committee met and interviewed, we received four proposals. The building committee met here two nights in a row and interviewed all four and has made the recommendation that this be awarded to Paul Designs Project, P L L C, and Turk Architecture. Just so that you know, Paul Lewandowski from Paul Designs Project is on the Zoom, not to make a presentation, but only if you have any questions. And also Dawn Hodson, the chair of the building committee, is here in case you have any questions. Otherwise, this is in order for you to authorize me to sign the agreement, and if approved, I will sign the agreement tomorrow. Next week, the building committee will be meeting, assuming that you approve this tonight, with Paul and his team to start the planning process.
We authorize the town manager to sign an agreement for architectural, architectural and engineering services for the renovation and demolition of the former Monmouth Academy with Paul Designs Project, P L L C, and Turk Architecture.
I'll second.
So there is a motion by Harold, a second by Kent, to authorize the town manager to sign the agreement with, for those services, that company. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, everyone. I look, I look forward to working with all of you. Thanks.
I'm excited to meet with you next Tuesday.
We're prepping already.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Next is a work session. The first one, the first thing is the reformation of Economic Development Committee, Development Committee.
So we have been discussing this for quite a few months now. As you will remember, the old Economic Development Committee kind of morphed into the School Reuse Committee, and then after that, no Economic Development Committee work was really being done. It was all school reuse. And so we've been talking for quite a while now about reforming and maybe restructuring the Economic Development Committee. I've asked Reagan to be here this evening. You have some information in your packet that Reagan has for you suggesting maybe what you'd be looking at for the duties of the Economic Development Committee, who you might be looking for, not as in who by name, but who from what sectors, and with that, I will turn it over to Reagan.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Reagan La Rochelle, economic development consultant for the town. So you do have a memo in your packets outlining what our thoughts were in terms of re-establishing the Economic Development Committee. And it kind of plays into kind of what I've been working on the past month that I've been here in terms of really trying to get a get a critical mass of information around what economic development activities there are here in Monmouth and what you have, what you need to work on, what the gaps are. And so this committee would really be a cross-section of business, community people, nonprofits, and work with me to kind of identify some of those areas that the town needs to improve on. It would be kind of a, it would be kind of the dealing with the minutia of some programs and and being able to recommend to the select board kind of maybe certain types of, as I said, programs, but also, for example, the facade improvement grant application that you just reviewed, I think needs to be updated, and that would be something that the committee would work on and then present to you as a final work product, for example. So I I'm happy to answer questions. I do, I did include some kind of short-term and midterm goals that I see the committee working on. I think they'll have a lot to do, and I think it will be a fulfilling assignment for people who have that interest. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Or discussion maybe about what your vision of the committee is going to be or will be?
Sure. What's your vision of what the committee would be and should be?
Well, as I said, I mean, usually committees and and groups like that are used to hone in on the details and the minutia and then have something to present to the select board instead of making you guys the Economic Development Committee, for example. So some things that I've been thinking about are the application that you just reviewed. Also coming up, you you do have a tax increment financing district in town, and as part of economic development in Monmouth, we really want to identify some tools that businesses that are here can use, and also ones that might be looking at relocating could take advantage of. So one of the things that I often think are important, especially for smaller municipalities, is to have a tax increment financing policy which would help you to identify what projects you might consider for a tax increment financing district and why you would consider that. And the reason that's important for smaller towns especially is because you don't see very many tax increment financing proposals. So there might be a few years in between the time that you see two different projects, and it's hard to compare, and why did you do this then and not now? So that would be another project. I think the Economic Development Committee would be very helpful in working on. Also, and I'm actually meeting with the with Dennis and the librarian.
Julie.
Julie, I've learned a lot of names, but I haven't gotten them all next week. And we're starting to talk about filling out kind of a community calendar in terms of annual events. And so again, in the in the idea of what can bring people to town, what can bring people together, and and what, and how businesses can benefit from that. So those those kind of more detail-oriented things would be part of the Economic Development Committee's tasks. I think that, I think probably the biggest concern would be just making sure that I don't give them too much. I think there's a lot of great things that they can work on as as the committee, and so it will just be making sure that I don't, you know, overuse them, overuse them, so. But if you have other thoughts, Harold, I'd be happy to hear them. But if you have other thoughts, Harold, I'd be happy to hear them.
No, I just, you have to start someplace. And so those are a couple of good points to start with, I think. And then perhaps as you know, once the, the seed starts to sprout, then we could, you know, look at what, what types of businesses are identified as being ones that would benefit from locating in Monmouth. And, and then how do you go about seeing you know, how you attract those types of business? I mean, we're not, we're not going to have a water bottling plant show up and pay all our bills like, you know, some, some towns have. We're probably not going to have a major industry locating. Although we do have very good access now, a lot better access to, to transportation than we used to. But, but you know, that's, that's one of the things that I would look for the committee to, to try to do in the course, due course of time is, is identify businesses that makes sense that they would want to locate here.
Right, absolutely. And, and I'll just say, and I've, and I've talked to Linda about this, a lot of times with, with business in any municipality, it's, it's about nurturing the, maybe for example, the, the home-based businesses, having them have the tools and infrastructure to be able to move out of their homes and move to an actual business space. It's, you're going to find that the people who are in Monmouth and love Monmouth and are the, are the best types of businesses to have in Monmouth, for example. And so we met with the brewery, for example, Linda and I, she brought me out there.
Grateful Greens.
Grateful Greens. Met with Grateful Greens. And you know, that, they're a perfect example of, of a business that is committed to Monmouth, is going to grow in Monmouth sooner or later. And so those are the types of things that, that will really be the reality for Monmouth Economic Development.
What these, these things that you've given us on this, we've done all those things through the, for a number of years. And, well, I guess you could simply be updated what we've done, I suppose. Because we do have, you know, the, we do offer businesses tips and, and like the museum is frequently a candidate. And and we, of course, with, with COVID, that we haven't had the usual annual activities like the breakfast we would be having with the fire department. And, and we do have a revolving loan fund and I don't know if anybody's made use of it. But all that stuff is, we've, we've done it. But I could see why it would be a good idea to review it and. I think it hasn't been done in a targeted manner, which was, which is what I was trying to get at, that the Economic Development Committee as it progresses would actually develop a, a list of targeted opportunities that they thought would be a good fit.
And then if I can say so, Doug, so, so then you'd be able to go to a business and say, these are the tools that we have in Monmouth and they're well laid out and well marketed. So people understand them and know how to use them. So if you do have a revolving loan fund, like you said, I don't think anyone's ever used it. So how do we make it so people will use it?
Yes, and know about it and know that it exists to, to draw them here, to take advantage of that.
And the, the committee could, you know, coordinate with, there's, there's information about traffic flow, number of cars. You know, Chief Mulholland's done a traffic study that could tell you the flow of number of vehicles that travel on various, especially on Main Street, you know, any given day. So those are the types of things that you can also pull in. When you put a packet together that says, this is what we see currently for, you know, for traffic flow, at least for a base. And then people say, oh, I can, I can improve that because I'm going to be pulling people in.
And I think the biggest thing for me is, you know, trying to figure out a way to, to work with the owners of a couple of vacant buildings down downtown to, you know, find something that'll be a good fit and what's preventing people from, that have rented there from staying there, you know? Why were the reasons that they, the business left? You know, what can we do to make it, make it more attractive and help you achieve your goals to stay here and keep the business going? So, you know, we can all talk about what it was like when we were growing up here in the seventies and you couldn't even park on Main Street because everybody was at Curly's. But that doesn't, that's not there anymore. And, you know, to be able to have that, it's, you know, it would be wonderful to be able to figure out where a space for people to go there. Because that's one thing that people have mentioned to me repeatedly is to figure out a way to have, you know, food in the center of town that could, you know, have the theater or Monmouth Community Players and get something to eat too, you know? So all those things to try to brainstorm what it will take, other than, you know, being bewitched and create more space. So we can, which we can't. But a way to, to, to put those things together to food and entertainment.
Absolutely.
It's, it's interesting you mentioned Curly's because in 1972, that was, I think, two tables and a bar. And not many people showed up. But again, it was local Monmouth family that, that took it from that little grain of mustard seed and made it into a thriving business that you're right, on Friday and Saturday night could find a place to park on Main Street. And people came from a wide area to come and visit Curly's and root there.
Or even in the, you know, dead of winter with the snowmobiles.
Leonis did a great business by the railroad tracks for years. So, but that was small and it grew.
You know, I, I, I know that the efforts that the planning board has been putting together, actually the comprehensive planning group has been putting together, have been put on hold for one reason or another. And so we're a little bit slow in terms of being, producing an update to the town's comprehensive plan. That there might actually be a silver lining and its connection to economic development in that, because it might give us one more bite of the apple in terms of looking at some opportunities within the comprehensive plan to set an agenda for the next 10 years that might make some sense. I mean, if you talk to anyone, first name that comes to mind is Paul Roop, who represents the town on the utility of Greater Augusta Water District. Runs the trunk line that we rent to, to dispose of our waste. There's some, you know, some very concerning issues with the number of people who are actually making use of that service having dwindled with time and that the cost per household has increased as a result. Part of that is because we've spread out in Monmouth. Part of that is because some of the industrial use that we've been traditionally producing waste has gone, gone away. And as we look at, you know, means for, you know, regaining some of that critical mass so that we can reduce the cost per household of, of those expenses. Maybe the Economic Development Committee could spend some time thinking about what we might be able to do in the comprehensive plan to encourage, you know, a greater density of development in certain areas of town.
So as you all know, we talked a few months ago about developing a policy for our boards and committees, how people are appointed, reappointed, et cetera. And several weeks ago, I sent to you a draft which I borrowed from another municipality. We're in the process of tweaking that and I want to add to that a description. So what will happen is anyone who's interested in applying to one of our boards and committees will know exactly what that board and committee does, when it meets, how many people are on it. And what I would like to have Reagan do is come up with a description of what that, what the Economic Development Committee will do and will include it in that policy. I'll be bringing that policy to you probably next month. I'd like to get it wrapped up before I leave so that you have it. I don't want it to fall through the cracks and I want to make sure it's in place before you come up against reappointments next year. So, and I don't know if you want to discuss a little bit about some of Reagan's comments about types of representation you'd like to have on the committee, but that would certainly be helpful to both of us.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm wholeheartedly agree that we need to include businesses, you know, people that own businesses in town and bring employees into town and pay taxes in town for their business. I think that, you know, they're already running a successful business. Why not tap into their expertise and also their wants and needs or what could help them even do better? So I think definitely having people that are, you know, business owners, for sure. We definitely want to do that. And also if there's people that, you know, are running home-based businesses, and then you had mentioned, you know, nonprofits and, you know, people from the, the museum or arts groups, I mean, and then the people that have a say-so in the community. So I don't, that was my question. When are we going to start saying we're looking for members, you know, to, you know, I don't think we want to wait till the policy's ready to go. I want to get the people in sooner than later so that when we can hit the ground running and not, you know, be waiting.
I think before you start bringing on members, you're going to have to decide, one, how many members you want, how big you want your committee to be. And then we can write down the sectors that you want represented. And do you want a liaison from the select board to the Economic Development Committee? Do you not want that? Totally up to you. But, you know, we can do that. We can have an additional discussion if you're not ready to make that decision tonight on what sectors you want. Or Reagan can draft up something and I can bring them back to you at the next meeting.
I like that idea.
Which one?
Reagan drafting something up and bringing it back to us.
At the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. That work, Reagan?
Yeah.
Okay.
What your ideal number is, you know, because I know that at some point you get a tipping point where there's just right, too many, but you know.
I, I had proposed, you know, maybe six to 12, but settling on probably around 10, I would say, you know, eight to 10.
Eight to 10, yeah.
And, and, yeah, but as, as we, as I kind of present to you what you, what you, what the options are, I think it will, it will, it usually settles into something pretty clear, you know, once you, once you get a feel of the group. So I think it'll be good.
Does that board have to be odd-numbered if they're voting on things or how does that work?
I think we, you usually want to have an odd number, just so you don't end up in a situation where you've got a tie and then you're not making any progress. That doesn't mean that someone might not show up for a meeting and something's up at a time anyway.
Anyway, but at least.
Well, and they're not, they're not voting in the sense that they're making policy. So there's not, right, so I, I don't think odd even is a big consideration because they're not, they're not voting on policy. They're, they're voting on a recommendation. And if there's half the committee that feels very strongly about something and the other half feels very strongly opposed to that, then I think it would be up to the director to bring both points of view to the select board and say, we can't agree on this. We'd like some input, some feedback.
I think it's also interesting because it's been an issue in the past that I would be in favor of inviting business owners who may not be residents of Monmouth but own a business in town.
Well, the other thing too, I think is we shouldn't overpopulate with business owners because sometimes that can stifle, they can have a vested interest in not having competition come in for their, their business. So I think we want a broad spectrum representation.
So do you have what you need, Reagan, to, we'll look at your calendar and make sure the next meeting works for you?
Oh, yeah. Okay, perfect.
With something that you would deal with, maybe would be, I don't know if you can do it, reshape the TIF district? Because it doesn't, like, it doesn't take in going south on Main Street.
Stalks at me.
Like Margot's Stevens Greenhouse.
Lodge two would love to get a facade grant.
Yes. Well, the committee can always look at that and make a recommendation, but keep in mind that that's a process. That means amending the TIF or adding a new TIF. It means taking it to the voters. It has to be approved by Department of Economic Development in Augusta. So that's a process, but there's no reason why the Economic Development Committee couldn't look at where the TIF is and make recommendations to you.
Wasn't it changed before?
We, we, right, because we, we were able to give Timmy Jackson a facade grant outside the district. So there's a way to do that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go all the way to Clemento's farm.
Oh, yeah.
Chick's Orchards, you got a lot of businesses.
There's a lot of businesses.
There's, there are some very strict guidelines about where you can and can't expand it to. And so the, you have to look at that because I don't, I don't necessarily know that you can, oh, you can expand past the urban line. It doesn't reach.
I think of like a higher district is a good example.
Again, that would be something for.
Why we have Reagan.
I think if I remember correctly, I actually think your TIF district is at one of the limits, which is size limit of 2%. So you wouldn't be able to expand it. You could change the boundaries or you could create a different district that it, it, there's, there's a lot of very creative ways to work on it.
We would look to you to offer us ways to help businesses or potential businesses that are, would, would locate outside the current boundary lines. And how could we potentially assist them?
Sure. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Thank you, Reagan.
You have enough?
I do. Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next work session is the solar array presentation.
John is here. John Dunsture from Revision Energy. The board, we talked, I don't know, several meetings ago about the possibility of latching on to a, some kind of a community farm, which would have saved us maybe $3,000 a year. When I brought that to you, you said that you would like me to do an RFP, thank you, John, and see if we could find out what the benefit to the town would be if we had our own array. I put out an RFP and I received two proposals, one from Sundogs out of Searsport and one from Revision out of Portland. Basically, I mean, there, most of these are going to be similar. The one thing that I appreciated from Revision Energy is that they were able to tell us upfront what the buyout cost was going to be seven years down the road. And we could not get a definite figure from the other company. I think both companies are very reputable and would do a great job. But my thought is if the town decides it wants to have an array and at some point down the road you want to purchase that array, that's when your energy is then going to become totally free to you because you're not going to be paying for the energy anymore. And if you buy the array, you'll either borrow the money, which then you'll incur borrowing costs, or if you plan ahead and you start putting money into a reserve account, then you can buy it outright at the end of whatever period of time you decide to do that. And then you will have an even better savings from my perspective. But that's going to be up to the select board. So with that, I will turn it over to John.
Thank you, Linda. And thanks for having me tonight. And this looks daunting, but I promise to go through it quickly. I did want to do this. This is about half of the proposal that I normally do. Linda told me to try to keep it poignant and sweet and short. So that's what I'm going to do for you. But the good thing about it is you'll have something to refer back to. So I'm going to, we'll flip through this if you don't mind. I'll go quickly through the initial slides. I'll talk a bit, a little bit about what a PPA actually is, talk about the current legislation, talk about why we sized the array, the what we did and what the financial returns and the options are for you in terms of the proposal. So. So just real quickly is, uh, you know, Revision Energy, um, looking at this slide here. Um, is an employee owned company. We're founded in Maine, uh, in 2003. So for solar companies, we're very long in the tooth. There's not many solar companies around that long. We're about 300 employees now. Um, still looking for electricians. If anybody knows somebody who's looking for a job. And as I said, we're a hundred percent employee owned and we are actually the number one rooftop roller installer in the, uh, in New England and number five in the country. And quickly coming up that ladder in terms of ground mount. The next few slides are literally just a couple of examples of some of the jobs we've done. Um, both ground mount and that, uh, from that is just more stuff in terms of revision and the company to be dealing with. This is the, uh, industry honors. As I said, we're the number one rooftop solar contractor in New England, number five countrywide. We have, uh, received numerous awards, continue to receive. We were the number one electrical business in the state of Maine, uh, recently. The companies we've worked with, and then if we go to the, uh, slide where it's the typical PPA structure. So again, so the PPA, which is essentially the acronym for power purchase agreement. And I apologize because solar people speak solar speak, so we tend to use acronyms a lot. But basically what happens is 90% of a good portion of all the solar incentives are tax incentives. Municipalities and nonprofits can't take advantage of those. So therefore they're at a disadvantage in terms of going solar. So the industry, along with the Department of Energy, got together and basically said, how do we solve them? They created something called the Power Purchase Agreement. And in the Power Purchase Agreement is you're going to have a finance party or a third party that will actually own and operate the system initially. They can take advantage of the tax savings. And after five years, they can sell the system to whoever the host is. In this case, the town of Monmouth would be the host. And you can, then they pass along that savings where their tax credits were to you. So basically you have is a third party company that comes in and builds the whole thing. They own it for the period of time. Now, if the town opted not to buy it, you could stay in the power purchase agreement for the whole 20 year life of the system. After that point, you could buy it out at the residual value or say to the owner, please take it away. So they would, it's their responsibility to remove it and restore the ground to the way it was. The important thing about this is from the standpoint of great opportunity is in terms of, so what happens is that you would agree as the town to buy the all the electricity generated by the system. You would get the value of the credit that the state has now enacted in terms of on your bill, which I'll get into a little bit more. Would you be paying the PPA provider less than that? So you have your initial savings coming up. And then as Linda so distinctly put it, after, if you buy it after year five, instead of paying for that PPA provider, you're getting a hundred percent of the savings. So that's really where the tipping point in terms of the value of it. And I'll get into some of the financials with you in a second. But ownership is really what this is all about. It's a path to ownership, though you can stay in the PPA as it is. Maine, uh, in 2019 enacted probably the one of the most aggressive policies for, for solar. And that is called the, uh, Net Energy Billing Agreement, which was, uh, LD 1711. And basically for the first time in solar, whether it was done, uh, residential or not, you have the ability to build this solar rate or participate in a solar rate to offset 100% of your bill. In the past, you could only offset the kilowatt hour usage. So your bill, um, if you're all familiar with a municipal bill or a business bill, your bills has three parts. It has the initial part, which is the monthly connection. It has the kilowatt hour charges that you pay, and that's kind of the electricity that you're sending. You pay a supply side on that, right? You have a third party vendor sometimes that you pay for the supply. You also pay a kilowatt hours for CMP to get it here. And then you pay something called demand and transmission charges. And many times the demand and transmission charges can be a larger part of your bill. The beauty of this pro- this new bill in Maine, it allows you to offset 100% of those charges. So in the past, you could only do a kilowatt hours. So you could, we could develop a system now for you. Size it properly so that when, when it, it will offset, you would get a credit on the bill to offset it at the end of the year, your entire electric bill. Now you'd be paying the PPA provider during that period. But again, once you took ownership of it, it would be wiping out the entire bill.
At the bottom of that page, yeah, CMP is attempting to put this program on hold.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so CMP, part of the PUC is that they're in with, um, and the agreement arrangements with utilities was that when I reach the certain threshold, CMP is about to say, we'll come back to the PUC. They've already attempted to do this and the PU says, no, we haven't really reached the threshold. But once they do, there'll be a moratorium on the program and then later they'll come back. Probably if, if, if it's a case in 90% of the states that we, we've done work in, is they'll come back with the less valuable option. So there's a tiny bit of urgency to, to get your program up and running.
Because, because once it's up and running, it would be very difficult for them to pull the rug out.
So the beauty of this particular program, and I should, is that you actually sign a 20 year contract with them, right? Which is nice. So the next page, which says, uh, Monmouth CMP billing by account. So Linda provided me all the electric bills, a year's worth of bills. And we're able to determine that Monmouth, this billing period, this may have some COVID mixed in, so it might not be the most exact number to be working on, but it basically says you spent a little over $30,000 a year on CMP electric. And the next page basically is an analysis that we do, is how do we figure out what size system you need? So we take that total billing and we associate it with, and in this case, we use 90% of your billing as a target. Uh, I'm really bullish with my customers. I actually look to see them do 100, but a lot of people do not. Uh, so I picked 90 as the number. So if you were looking at the CMP bills, this, this sheet right here will tell you what the bill was for the year. It'll talk about in terms of the, uh, buffered cost, which is the 90 cent, the 90%. Each bill's credit is determined by this rate class. And I'll get into that a little bit more. And then, and you can see the bills depending on if it's an SGS or an MGS, how much the credit would be. Then it tells, then from next thing over, it tells me in that column where it says required kilo- kilowatt hours. That tells me how many kilowatt hours the system has to produce to offset that dollar amount. Right? If I lost you there, and I wouldn't be surprised if I did, because it's, it's a little confusing. Basically, we're taking the total dollar amount target, whether it's 90% or 100%. We divided by the value of the credit that it's going to get. I use 12.8 cents in most of mine, which is the lower one. And that will tell us what, how many kilowatt hours. And from that, I can back into the system size we need. So if you look down at this bottom corner, you'll see that, that the estimated kilowatt hour production off a ground mount system that needs, that, that I would need to produce 168 KW system to produce the kilowatt hours to offset that portion of your bill.
And so you must factor in the non-generation periods in that. Like you, you don't generate solar power when it's dark. You don't generate a lot of it when it's cloudy. Uh, so you, you must be, you must have a formula for that, that takes that into account.
Absolutely. And that's a great question. So our, uh, and if you slip up, flip over a couple of pages to this. We have a software system, helioscope, the industry's premier product. And it basically looks at the nearest weather stations. It'll triangulate the weather stations. And so it'll know that, and over the last 50 years in Monmouth, in this area, you've had so many snowy days, so many rainy days, so many that it discounts night. It's basically doing a pinpoint accurate production. And as you can see, when we're looking at the chart over here, you know, it's, it's lower in the winter months and then it peaks up and that's a typical, uh, solar array thing. So this, this is a calculation and I would say that if, if, if you said to me, John, you've got to put 500 bucks on the table now that this is going to happen, I would say yes. Um, so this is actually the production for the, the system. This is.
So just, just to follow up on the question. So basically this becomes a weighted average of generation. You, you're, you, you know, you're going to have low generation periods. You're not going to have really high generation periods. So you average that out and that gives you what you're going to produce a year to offset our bill. Is that pretty accurate or?
Yeah. So it actually factors in the hours of the day and the sunlight and all that too. I mean, it factors in terms of how many hours of sunlight and you have that. But in the essence, when you look at 50 years, it's a weighted average, right? So if we're taking 50 years where the data and coming up with this, it's, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that makes sense. I just wanted to confirm that's what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So if we just go to this page right here, this is the array, right? It's 166.9 KW. KW is 1,000 watts. So it's 169,900 watts. That's the size of the system. It ends up being the 412 panels that, of the panels were currently specing for the project. And it will generate 115,000, uh, 300 kilowatt hours a year. So if we go back to my original thing in terms of the calculations, that's just about 90% of your bill would offset. That number can be, we, we could work on your target, whatever you're comfortable with. You know, when this building down here comes down and then something else goes in there, you're, you're going to get a spike in usage, right? So do we want to plan for that? How do we want to handle it? You start putting an EV charging car stations. Do you want to plan for that? So we can, to basically settle on what we call the target. And then we build the system to do and match that target.
Uh, in this particular program, does, uh, does this, does the state allow banking of excess production?
So the, so the ultimate answer is ultimately you only have 12 months from when it's produced to use it. So you have a 12 month period. So if you're overproducing in July, you have until July, July of next year, if you haven't used that.
Which is why you've got a 90% buffer.
Yeah, which is typically why we use the buffer.
Okay.
So I think follow up on Kent's question is, should we plan 100%? So that we, we can take into account those spikes that, that come in or charging stations or whatever the extra demand is, should we plan at 100%?
So I recommend to all of my clients to do 100%. Um, I would say in my, in my own town of Wells, I'm on the energy committee. We just done signed a contract for one. We did, they, nobody was comfortable going over more than 90% except the energy committee who said, if we just add charging stations, those charging stations add seven kilowatt KW of demand, just one. So I don't know how many it might have in town, but let's say 10 or one at every facility. So it's really easy for that to get it and it doesn't incrementally hurt you. And the other side of it is solar. What happens in a solar year, if it produces five, 215,000 and 300 kilowatt hours the first year? The next year it's going to be 99.95% of that. And it's kind of degrades. Right? So that degradation is going to happen. So my, I'm bullish, so I say you should do it. Because other 10, 10 years from now, you'd be below your 100, you'd be 10% below your 100 if you had started on, you'd be 5%.
See, that's why my original, my initial thought when I was formulating my question was, should we actually be going to 105%? Because we know that in 10 years, we're going to be down to 95% or thereabouts.
So again, I'm bullish. Yes. The other side of it too is that CM, this doesn't factor in CMP's most recent rate increase against the SGS, which was 11.2%.
True. And we just added heat pumps to this building, which aren't even reflected in our historic electric field.
That's right. So I, I would be, I would tend towards the bullish side and say, if we're going to do anything, we should shoot for something over 100%.
And that's very easy. We just, that's just us adding, you know, to the array. So I, I don't, I think we could certainly do that. The PPA provider, the investor, I should tell you.
Would your, would your, uh, buyout pricing simply be a proportionate amount?
Yeah, it's typically between 60 and 65% of the system caught initial system cost. So if, if it's a larger system, it, it rises in that, in that range.
But then we'd have to look at what's the cost of us owning the system and paying for it to be dismantled at, after 20 years versus uh, just continuing in the PPA and letting the owner take care of that at the end of 20 years.
Yeah. So I, I, I mean, the PPA itself will be 20 years because it coincides with the state incentive, right? Because that you can assign a 20 year contract with the state to get those credit. I mean, the piece to, with CMP to get those credits. So that's why we do it at 20 years. The system's life, life cycle of this is well over 40 years. And the numbers that you see reflective in any of my things here include a couple of things. So the solar system, the panels, they're very passive, right? It sun hits it, electrochemical produces, you don't, not no moving parts. It gets to the inverter to convert it to AC. That's the workhorse of the system. So what we do is we budget, when you see the numbers would get into, you're going to see in year 20, that that inverter budgeting was going to get replaced. So if you, if you're in a PPA and you just stand in the PPA, you don't have to worry about that. You don't have to worry about the annual maintenance cost, nothing. As long as you're in the PPA. If you buy it out after you see in the financials, you'll see that I've included. Give you an idea of what maintenance will cost. That's us monitoring your system, taking care of your system, coming out and looking at your system. It's also the written budgeted inverter replacement is in that. So when you see my cash flow numbers, they're net of uh, the, uh, maintenance O and M, and they're also net of that replacement, but we'll see that a little bit further in. And people always ask, what happens if new technologies that comes out? The good thing is it'll probably would fit right on that, but I would bet you the, the financial benefit to replacing it would not be that good because you've already paid for these. So they're, right now they're producing all 100% profit to you. If you put something else to upgrade it, what's the, what's the period of, of redoing that? So. And the panels themselves, I should say, also have a 25 year, uh, linear warranty. Uh, basically that means the production is guaranteed for the 25 years. Um, and again, there's no reason to go beyond that. I liken it all the time to my refrigerator. It only had a two year warranty on it. And mine's around 25, 30 years old. Um, so just to get into more details of the array quickly, because I do want to be mindful of your time. But thanks for the questions. I think they're great. So again, the system size is 166.9 KW. 412 panels. The AC side and the only one who cares about the AC side, do you have this slide here? The, um, the AC side is just the utility. They're worried about what, how much we're going to be putting back on the grid at a peak period. That's all they have. It's the only one who cares about that. Again, it's going to generate 215,000 kilowatt hours. So from your standpoint, the upfront cost for you is nothing. You upfront, any operations and maintenance cost to you during the period, uh, at which the array is uh, owned by the PPA is nothing to you. The first year PPA rate and this proposal is 11.3 cents versus the credit of at least 12.28 cents or 12.45 cents or the new one, which is going to come in higher. So you've got about a 10 and a half, 10, 12% spread there. Um, and if, if this comes with the option to buy it out in year five, and the reason it's year five is because of the tax credit. If the owner of the system doesn't hold it on to sell the system, sells the system before year five, then the government will come back and re-claw the tax credits from them.
Can I interrupt you for?
Yes, you're not interrupting, please.
I want to understand exactly what year one PPA rate per kilowatt hour is.
So that's, so the, for every kilowatt hour that's generated from the system, the town will be paying the owner of that, of the array 11.3 cents per kilowatt hour.
Rather than the current rate of 12, of 12.56 cents or, or 12.28, depending on the category of here.
Yeah. So there's a caveat there and that's the difference. That's the credit that would be placed on your bill. The value of the credit per kilowatt hour. This is where the solar gets a little trickier now. So what you're doing essentially is you're buying the credit. It's almost like buying, uh, American Express cards at a discount, a fixed discount for a period of time. You're going to, the card is worth more than you're paying for. Because if, if you were to look at, and the reason I, I want to stress that there is, is the, if you were to look at your bill, your, your rate would be less than that, your per kilowatt hour rate. But you're, in this case, you're designing the contract with CMP for a credit value. And that's, that's the difference. That's the 12 point rate.
So then the net benefit would be the difference between the two.
Yes.
And the net benefit is, I'm seeing it as like, uh, point 0126 or, uh, uh, 1.26 cents.
Yep.
Per kilowatt hour.
Yep.
Okay. And, uh, so if it's 1.26 cents per kilowatt hour, then, and our kilowatt hour current, our current kilowatt hour rate is 12.56 cents. Then we are looking at a 10% discount.
Correct.
Okay. Cause I thought I read somewhere here, there was a 17% discount. No, 10% discount.
It is a 10%. And if the 17, it was, if I have to look at that, I'm sorry, if that was in the proposal, on the, I'll need to double check that number for. on the, I'll need to double check that number for me.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize for that. And I'll, and I will correct and get back to Linda on, on, on the clarification.
Okay, I might be mistaken, no, but.
I, I do know, the reason why I know you're probably not, because when I submitted it to the finance team, I asked them to find an investor who would give you that exact number. And this is what they came back with, so maybe I didn't catch it. So. Next page is this one, which basically shows the savings. So again, um, the savings in the first year of the PPA, in the first five years is about fourteen thousand dollars. And that's the point at which you can purchase it. And basically, that, basically, that has an escalator of two percent throughout the life of the uh, utilities. So again, when you look at CMP taking eleven point two percent rate increase this year, that the two and two percent escalator probably seems very conservative, but historically, that's it.
Can you tell me again what the two percent escalator is? It assumes that CMP is gonna be increasing the electric rates of two percent, is that the assumption?
Yeah.
And the savings would follow in tandem?
Yeah, they write up with it.
Okay.
Um, so the estimate, again, the sheet here, the estimated savings in the first five years is fourteen thousand dollars. The six-year buyout of the system, that would be uh, four hundred and something thousand dollars, the buyout would be two hundred and fifty thousand nine seventy there. And again, we use to calculate the buyout, we use the exact calculations that the IRS does. So basically what has to happen in solar at the, at the time of the purchase, IRS will come and do a calculation to the value of the site, it's done net present value. We use that exact calculations. We could show you the, the calculation sheet that we use for that if you'd like, but that's how we peg that value. Um, so if you were to purchase it, then the, the uh, O and M on the system, that thirteen hundred dollars will be an annual cost escalating at the, a couple of percent. Um, if you stay in the PPA for the duration of the twenty years, you know, the savings to the town will be a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Dollars. Whereas if you were to buy it out at year six, the savings to the town for the twenty-five year cycle, and we use that just because that's the um, the uh, the uh, warranty of the panel production is uh, four hundred and twenty-six thousand. And if you stuck in the program for the full life of the, what we see is at least the life of the, is almost eight hundred thousand dollars.
And how much would it cost to decommission?
So decommissioning um, would probably be so that the panels at that period would, in terms of the recycle value of that, uh, would be a point where it would probably be a few thousand one way or another. The recycle value of the panels and the steel would, would offset the cost of uh, decommissioning. That's, you know, basically where we, I think they don't, I think what's gonna happen eventually is that the the uh, federal government will come in and basically hasn't happened yet and just get the industry to almost, it's always be like recycling bottles, setting aside money for, for that stuff. Um, that's what's going through. So the last slide in terms of the financials is the cash flow. And I just clipped the first twenty-five years here. So again, you can see that the production on this uh, kilowatt hours on the uh, left-hand side is going down one half of one percent. You can see the, you know, utility rate that we used. And that's a blended rate that takes all your meters, that's how we get to that rate. That's the total cost of the rest of credit, so that avoided utility is the credit times the production. That's the total cost of the credit that will get placed on the town's bill. Assuming ninety percent. The renewable energy credit, which I didn't spend a lot of time on, uh, you probably have heard about these REX. That's the rights to claim the uh, environmental benefit. Initially, the owner of the system will not be able to, will have those and will probably sell them. Once you own the system, you can sell and monetize or sell those, so you could see that it could generate twenty-seven hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars a year. Uh, current, we stopped that at ten years. There's no reason that those will probably not continue. But right now, we just stopped that because we try to be really conservative in the models and we also go the value, we bring the value down. Currently, they're trading at about forty, this model is using thirty and then going down five percent each year. So that's why you see that going down. The operating expense, as I mentioned, is, is only if we, you, you only pay it if you own the system. So I, this model illustrates a five-year buyout. So you would see that by that time, the uh, the uh, O and M would be, and it's slightly more than our O and M contract of thirteen hundred. And that is because in order to be in this program, in the state of Maine, you have to have a separate telephone line for communication to the CMP. So there's a cost of that every month built into there.
Why does that line jump at twenty-one years to twelve thousand for the operating expenses?
That is the inverter replacement.
Okay.
So that's that key piece of equipment. So we're, we budget that number in any finances you see from, as I call it, fully loaded. That's a great question, great catch. Then you can just see the PPA rate escalating, you can see the, the cost of the PPA. And this is where you can see the annual savings um, over here. So you got annual revenue, which is this annual savings, and then you can see cumulative. Then if you go over to the third from the left, you'll see the buyout. So the buyout again at two hundred and sixty-four thousand. And year five, you don't have to buy it in year five. You have, that's your first year, you have an option to buy it. You can buy, you will have that same option will come up each year and the system will get a little less and a little less and a little less and a little less. And that buyout schedule was in the proposal, so you can get an idea of where it is. By, is it, especially with uh, bonding rates being historically low and a few other things. If you, the earlier you can buy it out, the more beneficial it is. And I could certainly work out with, for Linda, if you bonded at two percent, what that would look like in terms of the cost versus revenues for you.
Or you could create a reserve account and buy it outright without borrowing the money, the other option.
What's our current interest rate for the last time we borrowed money?
Two something. It depends on who we borrow the money from, whether it's the bank or the bond bank, but the bond bank. The downside of the bond bank is you can't ever pay it down. Whereas with the bank, you can.
Well, it's, it's interesting to me, if we, we look at the potential for buying out at hypothetically, two hundred and fifty thousand, of course, that might change if we change the buffer, but uh, if we, if we do a year six buyout at, at two hundred and fifty thousand, a back of the envelope calculation would tell me that the return on investment for buying it out there would save us uh, about thirty thousand dollars a year in electrical expenses, uh, maybe a little less if we're, if we're already saving ten percent now. So that's a rate of return that's roughly um, ten percent, maybe a little bit less if we have to include this maintenance expense, your yearly maintenance expense, once we, once we do buy it out. So, so if we're, if we're buying it in year six, even if we, worst case scenario, borrow the money at, at two point five percent. And we save ten percent. Because, or, or the, the, the investment returns ten percent, the net benefit to the town would then be, you know, uh, seven and a half percent, um, which is quite advantageous, especially if that lasts for, you know, twenty to forty years.
Yeah, so the next, I just gave you the full forty years cash flow as well, so that bears it out. And again, when you're looking at it from the standpoint of where I'm showing you the savings after the buyout, and that first year after buy out that thirty, almost thirty-one thousand, that is net of the O and M. So.
Right, so po- potentially, we save the loan payment plus.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it pays for itself.
Yeah.
We don't have to wait five years for a return on investment or ten years or whatever, we get immediate return on investment.
Right.
Doesn't really cost us anything to buy it out.
Right, we're, we're paying the bank instead of paying the electric company.
That's exactly right.
Right, exactly. And we're paying them less than the electric.
Yeah.
So I have a question on the size of, you know, how many feet is this going to run? So when we look at this, since there's no scale on here, you know, for me to look at this map, I don't know how far it is from this point to this point. So how, how long of a stretch are we looking at?
The width in terms of across the rows, um, I'm gonna venture that, that's, what's that field down there? Hundred feet? The width, just that little area where, yeah, probably. Yeah, I think it's, I would, I, I would venture the guess that, that, that's about a hundred feet wide.
And pretty much the same across, going across the parking lot this way, behind the sand pile?
Yeah, it almost looks square, but I could probably very easily tell you that space there. And then if you're gonna add maybe a row or go wider, depending on the size of the system that you might. I'm really mindful of the, for lack of a better word, the corral. That, that exists there. Uh, I didn't wanna get into that per- area, but you know, again, I think this is easily could add to get to that hundred five or whatever case. And I think at the end of the day, you know, you'll, you'll have a, a system that it won't cost you anything in the beginning. And then literally as, as Ken basically said, when you buy it out with today's interest rates, you'll be cash flow positive on the loan till you pay it off. And then, but in essence, you'll be paying that loan and your electric bills can go away. And, and I know I've gone a lot longer than, than you'd hope, but I do, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the environmental benefits of it and this, and the benefits of being able to do school. So you'd be able to have this monitoring system that it comes with, will have the ability to put, put on your websites, be able to be, put in monitors in the schools. There was actually curriculum that the Department of Energy has created, so the teachers could go on, pull something down and actually have in-class teaching on it. Uh, we, we have, and I have done numerous times where I've gone into a class, whether I've gone into third graders and ninth graders and, and talk through it and walk through it. Um, and, and so uh, you know, there's, there's just beyond the financials, there's so much more benefit. Plus the fact that I think to be able to say that a hundred percent of your energy, can, electric energy consumed is coming from a solar array on in town is, is really valuable.
How is that protected?
By the electric code, by the uh, uh, national electric code, it has to be fenced in. And that fencing cost is built in.
What's underneath that? Raw or is it just grass? So that has to be maintained?
So, so it, yeah, so it, it, we recommend that you, you, we, we, we with you pick a grass that doesn't grow. I always say the best one is crabgrass, right? You ever see crabgrass? It grows about this high. And, but it takes over everything. So if you, we plant, and there's a name for that grass, but I don't know what it is. But if you plant that grass, it minimizes.
Basically planting a, a putting green on a golf course is what you're doing.
Keith, what is the current use of that field?
Um, we don't use it, uh, the fairgrounds use it.
Once a year?
Yeah, um, we. Um, yeah, we usually dump snow over here. That wouldn't really bother us, but.
Okay.
Snowmobile trail goes.
Snowmobile trail goes through there.
Yeah.
Because it goes to the now does, where does the snowmobile trail? But you're headed in, I guess I've never ridden up there. I mean.
You're coming from the, the bottom of your page.
Yeah.
Go right, go right more. Yeah. So go all the way to the right to that little.
This one?
Yeah. That's where the trailhead comes out.
All right.
And you go right across the proposal area and you go up to the left side of it. Yep.
Okay.
Could we reroute that?
Times that they go wherever they want.
Well, exactly, I have that same problem.
They go on the sand pile?
By the corral though.
You know, when I was a kid, I never would have done stuff like that.
How did this site, if I may ask, Mr. Chairman, how did this site get proposed at that specific location?
Uh, John worked with Keith, went around town, looked at various sites. We needed three phases. And that was the one place that we own that had three phase. We thought about the transfer station, which would have been the ideal location to put it, but there's no three phase up there.
Gotcha.
And uh, I know that, and I've talked to Phil about the displacement of the fair, you know, once a year. But, and I know that it won't be quite as convenient if we, if we decide to do this. But with most of this building next to us coming down, there's going to be a lot of property back there that we hopefully will be able to help the fairgrounds out.
What's the closest three-phase termination to the transfer station?
Main street, probably.
No, it should be further down, should be down by Bigford's old plant.
Oh, yes, it does.
I don't think I'd see, I mean, can they just take that?
Well, I, in fact, I, I know that there was three-phase going to Bigford's woodworking, which Harold took out. But, so there's gotta be, it's still on the street. And it is three-phase on Maple Street because that's coming right from um, because we're the main feed line from South Monmouth. To, cause whenever there's a problem, if Maple Street's down, Maple Street has to come up before Main Street does, so.
One of the other reasons we chose this site was because it's hidden, because people don't want to be looking at. I thought about it, but no.
And there is, you know, a lot of tree densities, you know, here. And because it kind of funnels, you know, it's skinnier here. I think I wanna go look at where this is, being on the, you know, Comston trustee board as a, you know, because this is Comston Park, I wanna come look at this and walk this and see what that uh, impinges on and that type of thing. Knowing that when you're dealing with the animals coming and having animals myself and wanting to see what happens with this corral and if it is near there, um. And I, I wanna be able to walk that. I think the other thing that I would like to see is, I would like to see the other proposal because I'd like to compare and contrast their size to the other proposal that came in. I just wanna, for my information, if one company proposes this and one company proposes this size, why is there difference? I want, I'd like to see the other.
I can show you the other proposals.
Yeah.
I believe they're basically the same.
I just, I'm, I just, you know, when I buy cars, if somebody's telling me this, I need this and or this price and this price. I wanna look and compare apples to apples. Um, my other question, um. So when do we have to decide on buying it? Can you wait? Or do you have to decide when you sign the agreement, when you're buying it out?
Great, great question. So in, at the beginning of year five, you'll be asked, do you think you're gonna buy it out at the end of the year?
And then each year we can make a decision?
Yeah.
Okay.
Up to the tenth year.
Up to the tenth year?
No.
No, up to the life of the, okay.
Up to the twentieth year.
But it doesn't really make sense after the tenth year, so.
Yeah, you start to get diminishing in terms of what the, what they, because by the time you pay back that loan, if you got through the first ten and then you think. So it's usually that, that sweet spot is that five to maybe ten year. In terms of, let me just, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wonder what other towns did, who have this, who are investigating this or, or have done it.
So we have a li- a hundred uh, different PPAs that we've done. Uh, and I, I can provide a list of all of them. I think there's a few in the original bit, there was a few towns mentioned in there. But literally, I can send over a list of uh, all the towns that have done it. But like I say, I, I live in Wells, before I even got to Wells, they already had one on their public utilities work building. They got to year six this year, they bought it, was seventy-nine KW, they bought, they purchased that system. So they, you know, they've seen the production and the reduction in the bills and they broke it. Um, but there's literally twenty or thirty at least that I can send over to you in terms of.
And most of them buy it at, at the end of five years or?
So that, the interesting thing about it is, um, the way that PPAs have worked and developed now has been recently. So we just starting to see that buy, that, that decision ma- making happening. So Wells, this is the first time. So Wells, this is the first time they could have bought it was year, at the end of year five. I know in Madison, New Hampshire, they did, as Linda explained, they set aside that a reserve each year just to buy theirs. So that way they knew when, you know, and the beauty, the way they set it up and Ken, they didn't do a reserve that was, had to be used for that. They set it up as a reserve and then if something happened in town, they could utilize the money for something else. The other, so we're not married to the site. I'm just in terms of the site and size and the flexibility of that. Because we did look at a few other places. If, 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 you know, the critical thing is three-phase power. That's the most important thing. If we, so when they, you hear about a lot about these five-megawatt projects. The five-megawatt project from a financial status can barely afford extending three-phase power a quarter of a mile. That's because it's so expensive for CMP to do that for us.
Well, the, the project up on the ridge has to have three-phase and it doesn't run up the ridge. I can tell you that. They're, they're already setting the new pole so they can run four-eighty-three phase up the, up the ridge. So extending from say where Bigford's woodworking plant was down to the transfer station would not be cost prohibitive, in my opinion. We'd have to get that. But so I think we need to just, before we take away this, this piece of ground from being able to be used for anything else like the fair and so forth. I think we ought to really look at, could we, what would, what would we need to do to locate down by the transfer station? And what would be the additional cost? And, and then we could weigh that, whatever that additional cost would be against the, the, uh, benefits that aren't structural benefits there.
Intangible.
Intangible. Good. Thank you, Ken. Yes. That's exactly what I was thinking.
We're not married to the site. Basically what we're, you know, this, this is the one that seemed to make the most sense for sure. Um, in terms of visibility or lack of visibility, in terms of access to three-phase power. Um, so we can look at whatever you want. It really comes down to, you know, is it appealing enough to move forward to an onsite proposal, which is what I really hope you do? Cause I think long-term it's the best way for the town to go and then just deciding where you decided and how we, why we.
Your question was how, how long do we have before we need to make the decision?
Yeah, so that, on the purchase of it, not on the decide, the decision to go forward with the project. It's Chris was wondering when we have to decide to buy it.
Yeah.
So that option starts at five years.
Yeah.
Decide anything. Decide anything for five. So from, so from my point of view, we, we definitely should move forward with the project. And, and we should move forward at a hundred and five percent buffer and not ninety percent. And then, so that means that by year ten, we're probably at ninety-five percent. And then it's just in my mind, a matter of location, you know?
How do we find out what it would cost to do the free, the three, three phase up at the transfer station? Who do we approach to get a cost?
It would be CMP.
Okay.
Somebody has to call. I could provide the, is an eight-hundred number for what's called the CSR. Customer Service Request. And, and basically then you'll tell them what they wanna do and they'll produce a number for you. We can certainly help through that process.
And what's the, what's the advantage as opposed to being a part of a co-op? To having our own system? We were.
So, so the offsites, for any municipality or, or nonprofit that doesn't have the option to find, can't find a place to cite one, I think it's a great option in terms of onsite as a, you will have the renewable under credits. You can buy it out and therefore you can enjoy a hundred percent of the savings once you've gone through the capital repayment process. So financially substantial, because if you could look at the, the PPA, if you stayed in the PPA, that's the kind of savings you would stay, get if you just stayed in one, a regular offsite. And the other side are the intangible benefits, which are, you know, being able to promote that you're a hundred percent solar. The ability to do things in the schools with education. I think those are big things.
And when I looked into it before the information I brought to you a few weeks ago, it was basically saving us about three thousand dollars a year. And that would be, I think, for the whole term of the, it's a twenty-year, you have to buy in for twenty years. And it would be about three thousand dollar a year.
That doesn't even cover Comston Halls.
No, it doesn't.
Cause I mean, you can definitely see which bill is Comston Halls on there. So, you know, but luckily we're gonna be, you know, that's why I think, obviously that being an old building. But I think that there's also a benefit to look at facilities, efficiency studies and to do energy grants within, and of course, we're gonna be doing this with the old high school because we're gonna be going through that. But, you know, if there's other things that we could be doing to help save money at.
I think we've changed out the lights at both fire stations, right? Did that last year?
And Dennis, I mean, that's our plan for the lights at Comston, but you know, have we done it at, you know, Public Works? I mean, cause LED lights are amazing. Cause I have them in my barn and it lights up the world. So.
They have them at Public Works.
And town, the town office and things like that. So.
That was something Buddy did when he was here. And he, I pre, I think he pretty much went through every building, but then Chief Roy took it upon himself to take care of his fire stations.
Yeah.
And that was just on not too awfully long ago. So, yeah, we've done quite a bit.
Phil, Phil is here, uh, cause he had a question about using windmills.
Yeah, I just, you know, I mean, I would like to, I would like to see a proposal, a comparative proposal, you know? You know, what we look at the sites that are under review.
How, how does it, in your experience, how does it compare?
I had a good question. So if the town opts to look into stretching a three-phase line from what we call Grady Mills Road to the transfer station, we incur the, the, the cost for that, right? Like the town that doesn't get, or does that get rolled into part, considered to be part of the project at that point? Or we pay, cause I, several years ago, I priced out stretching a three-phase line to run a new sawmill that we were building and to run a hundred and sixty feet of cable. And to make a connection to get the whole thing done was over sixteen thousand dollars. That was for a hundred and sixty feet of cable to, to come, leave me on the whole thing, whatever. So, so my question is, do we pay, the town pays for all that? And then the project ties to it wherever it happens to, if it lands at the transfer station or?
So ninety percent of the projects that are done, and this one is one of those projects, carry in there a utility interconnection cost of something. So I would imagine on a project of this size, it's probably got five thousand dollars as a budget to interconnect. Because obviously we have to get that three-phase to that field. So we have a budget. So anything beyond that, then we come back, we do look at it one of two things. Either the town can pay it, if you're ultimately gonna buy it, then that might be enough. Or you could look at a higher PPA rate to build it into, cost into the PPA rate and, and do it from there. So that it really comes back to, if you can find out what that cost is, then you determine. Typically what we are first pass is to go in and see if we can just get it built into the project and say that. The biggest issue with utility work is that utility work doesn't qualify for the tax credits. So that tax credit does not, you know, if it's, if it is fifteen thousand dollars, and you know, that twenty-six percent of that is not, you know, get the credit on it.
So one way or another, we would pay for it in, in terms of either reduced savings because we've asked the investor to pay for it. And they would like a return on their investment. Or it's we pay for it out of pocket to stretch the lines. And sixteen, a hundred and sixty feet at sixteen K works out to a lot of money if we go on a quarter mile.
I had the same reaction to it when the engineer came, he gave me the price for it as you do. It was a lot of money.
But that's, that's one of those things where, you know, it just, oh, well, the fairground, we only use it once, once a year and, you know, well, they'd lose that. Well, that, that could be a really sticky point for a lot of people, so.
Yeah. Well, and also it, you know, what's gonna happen at the transfer station? And so it was gonna be a transfer station, but what could happen here? I mean, if we're building a, a salt shed, if we're building, you know, other, a, a new garage or any of those things, you know, we're taking space that, what are we gonna do? We, we can't. We're not gonna move them. You can't. So I think that, you know, being forward, thinking about the fact that if we do start to grow and if we do put a salt shed in and, and need more space or any of that, we won't have it anymore. So.
Right. I, I agree that I, I, from my perspective, the transfer station property is the place to put it. If we can, if we can make it make financial sense to do it that way, for everything that Chris just said. And not concerned about the, uh, the scenic.
It's an industrial site.
Nobody, nobody cares there and, and you could, and you're always, you know, have the option to plant buffer.
Yeah. So you would only really, and because we wouldn't. The snowmobile trail goes through. I mean, that's the other part too. But the thing is, we'd only be probably having to plant a buffer just on the roadside, which isn't a huge stretch. And then you've got woods that come along to my snowmobile trail and woods over here. So, you know. Yeah, I'd like to kind of see a footprint of that, so.
So for planning purposes, so, and as I had mentioned in the paperwork in the packet, I had been approached by Phil, but I didn't mention Phil in my paperwork to talk about the possibility of wind energy, wind turbines in town. In addition to talking about solar. And I had told Phil at the time, the way we got to where we are right now was an RFP was put out. That was out for a few weeks. We get proposals back from solar companies and then here we are tonight. So in order to do, if you want to not move ahead with the solar project and you want me to do an RFP for turbines, then that's a process that's gonna take a little bit of time. But I, what I'd like to know from you is one, do you wanna move forward with the solar project? Do you want me, obviously you want me to look at the cost of putting the line at the transfer station? And then bring that back to you.
So I'm not in favor of wind for a number of reasons. And one of, one of them is the, the damage that that does to scenery. I mean, you, you rip up hilltops and, and you're, you're always looking at wind turbines. And every time I drive up to Bethel, I look at those and say, that's really ugly. And they kill a lot of birds. And the wind doesn't blow that hard all the time here. Solar, as you saw on that chart, is, is always going to generate power. It doesn't worry about the wind blowing. It's, it's when the sun is out, generates power. And so I'm just, I'm not in favor. In some places it may make sense. Out in the ocean where Governor Mills wants to put a floating one, that makes sense, probably. But I don't think it makes sense here. So I, I wouldn't support that.
And I have a hard time with, with the windmills. I mean, there's one on Main Street, Outer Main Street. I don't see that spinning very often. But also having been to Lincoln, having been to Mars Hill, having been through Quebec on the Gas Bay. Not something I, and, and if you drive on top of Norris Hill and look off towards Rumford, that area, that's all. All that you can see. It's not, that's, that's hard for me to envision. It's, it's hard enough for me to envision the, the solar part. I think it'd be harder for me to envision the windmill part.
Well, the other thing is that, that large-scale wind production is, is causes a lot of displacement to the environment and this does virtually nothing. So, and it's a lot easier, you know, construction-wise. And, and this is, to me, it's just the better, it's the better way to go. So again, having said all that, I would not be in favor of looking at wind, but.
Is it possible that we could see the other proposal?
Yep, I can send it to you.
Great. And does the, is it the town that owns the deed to this parcel? Or is it the, the Cochrane Fairground?
Dr. Comston gave that property to the town.
But the property that we're talking about putting a solar farm, the solar ray on is town owned.
I think that was all part of Comston. All Comston Park, really.
And, and one last question. In terms of the immediate savings, if, if I'm understanding your proposal correctly, doing nothing, we would save ten percent. Essentially, sign the agreement. Once the thing is up and running and we're functioning, assuming we can get three-phase power to wherever it is within the five thousand dollar interconnect budget. By signing the agreement, there's no cost to the town and we immediately save twenty-eight hundred bucks a year on electric.
Yeah, there's no upfront costs. There's no design costs or nothing. Everything is worn by the investor.
Okay.
And if we have to spend a significant amount of money to, to locate down at the transfer station because there's a, so, you know, a cost to run three-phase, then that may mean that we, instead of having a net revenue over the first five years, we, we just, they're flat, right?
And if it's sixteen thousand and the savings was fourteen, you could look at it, yeah, that would be like basically a push.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna be sixteen thousand to go from all the way to the transfer station.
That's a quarter mile.
No, no, I, I don't think so either.
A quarter mile.
No, I don't think so. I'm just saying that we, if we, we I agree with Chris that we need to look hard at not putting it where you've got it designed. And look hard at putting it at the transfer station. And if it's, if it's not financially plausible to do that, then you know, we make a decision having that in, in mind. But I think we need to know what the, what the cost is to do that. And how, how much benefit we need to look at as an offset to that cost.
I'm also wondering if there, I'm wondering, I don't know if you know, if there are any programs at the state level that might help us with the offset of that cost.
Don't know.
I can, yeah, let me look into that too. Who knows what's out there?
There is also the town pit, which we didn't go.
The town?
The town pit.
Oh. The down on Cotsi Road?
Yeah, no, over across from Fish Hatchery.
Exactly.
So that's three-phase.
That's three-phase.
So.
Where, where?
To go up into there.
So do you go in right across from Fish Hatchery? Okay. All right.
Before my purchases.
Oh, yeah. Cause and that's, there's not really anything to see out there. People, I know, but you don't see anything out there.
All that my space.
That's a, that's a good suggestion. So.
Yeah, so the two of you maybe connect.
Yep.
That would be great.
Yeah, I think that would be amazing.
I'm pretty sure three-phase comes all the way down Copsie Road, right?
Well, it comes.
South Monmouth Road, it turns left.
Yes.
Comes down Copsie.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's three-phase out front of my house. It is three-phase because it's gotta get to South Monmouth Road. So whether it goes Fish Hatchery or whether it goes South Monmouth, to South Monmouth Road and turns there, I'm not sure which way it goes. Cause I've never looked up.
It's, it's, it comes down South Monmouth Road, hangs a left on Copsie and goes down that direction. I, I didn't know how far, but.
So it doesn't go to Fish Hatch. It doesn't take Fish Hatchery Road. It goes a straight shot and then turns. Yeah.
Be sure to take Fish Hatchery.
Be sure to take Fish Hatchery.
All right. Well, we'll look at that.
That, I think that's, that's a great idea. Cause otherwise I was going to say, before we put it anywhere, I want some great stakes in the ground because I want to visualize how big this is, you know, I mean, I know how long my driveway is, but when you talk about 100 feet, I want to see the scope and size and then what it backs onto.
I'll get that information. I'll get back to you. I'll also send you a copy of the other proposal.
Yep, that would be crazy. Thank you very much. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
This room's 40 feet wide, right? No, I don't think four, maybe. Is this 32 feet wide? I guess I don't know much. Okay. So it's 32 feet, there's three of these, three and a little bit more of these wide.
We still have to do the warrant.
We still have to do the warrant.
Thank you. It's warrant number seven.
Thank you. So items over $1,000. Anderson Star and Bank, this is a payment on the transfer station trailer, $27,142.1 Bernstein Insurance lawyer Nelson, this is our monthly legal retainer and couple bond question, no, this is our monthly retainer, 3,700, no, it is, but bond questions and TIF revenue questions. $3,703.61 Blue Rock Earthworks for solid waste trips, $2,225. Central Main Power Electricity, $3,887.83 Creative Digital Imaging, this is postage for the tax bills, $1,131.57 DL Thorat, Thorat Air Products for air compressor service for fire apparatus. $1,112.59 Dana Westling for a watch guard camera for the police department, $1,127.90 GDI Services, our cleaning company, $3,050. Harris Computer Systems, this is the online interface and the project, project management module so that we can allow people to do online payment of their taxes. That is $3,545.83 High Grade Business Group, this is, uh, printing the tax bills, $1,375.36 Kennebec Valley Humane Society, our contract for animal control, $1,375.36 La Rochelle Consulting, this is for Reagan's, uh, consulting services for economic development, 3,800. Main Community Bank, um, this was a mistake where a bank overpaid and paid to the wrong person's account. Um, their taxes and we had to reverse the payment. So we have to show it as an expenditure, $4,559. Main Waste Energy for solid waste fees, $2,133.64 Monmouth Sanitary District for sewer service, $1,595. Purchase Power, this is for postage for, uh, town office for all mail that goes out, $4,040. Regional School Unit Number Two, our monthly payment, $449,225.24 Time Order Cable, this is internet service for Comston Hall, $1,347. Treasurer State of Maine, this is for motor vehicle taxes, titles, um, $5,692.53 and $6,746.58 And Treasurer State of Maine for police training, uh, this is for the academy, $3,000.
We approve the warrant. Second.
All of them in favor.
Will we adjourn? Second.